Good evening, everyone. This is calling to order our public hearing for six twenty-five. The purpose of the public hearing is to receive public comment on consideration of the community development block grant funding for a project in the community. Turn it over to Mr. Postle.
Thank you. Today's public hearing is really to gain comment. We are seeking community development block grant money, up to five million dollars, for the development of what we call our Webster Village project, which is a mixed-income project with partnerships with Mountain Projects and Gibbons Estates, Western Carolina University. And so I think Tiffany's got a few more details about the project, but we're required to hold a public hearing and receive comments about that intention, and that's what we're doing here tonight.
Good afternoon. So we came to you probably about a year and a half ago about this project. And for those that aren't familiar with it, we have sort of named it Webster Village. It's a piece of property in Whittier. And the plan is, we have Gibbons Communities that is planning on building one hundred and twenty units for our senior housing. Then we will also have Mountain Projects is planning on doing single-family homes, approximately thirty-three of those. And then Western Carolina University is also planning on developing multifamily workforce housing. The number of those is still yet to be determined. And so this opportunity became available because we are a disaster-declared county, and we felt like this was a really great opportunity because gaps still exist with regards to the infrastructure for this project. And we felt like this was a really good opportunity for us to be able to fill that gap. And so we are, at this point, just wanting, we're not asking anything right now, just for the public hearing. So we'll get to the resolution and some of the other requests here momentarily.
Did you mean Whittier, or do you mean?
Webster.
Webster.
It's Little Savannah. It's on the way to what is, okay. Oh. Well, it's in Webster. Thank you for clarifying. I mean, maybe eventually, but this is specific to Webster.
Anyone sign up for public comment?
Not.
Is there a motion to adjourn? One second. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? What's up tonight? We have our agenda. If everyone's had a chance to look over our agenda, and there are no needs for any amendments, I'll take a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Moving on now to our minutes. We have our public hearing for the block grant, the regular session minutes from October seventh, and our work session minutes from October seventh. If there are no needs for any amendments to those minutes, I'll take a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Moving on now to administrative reports. I know Smokey Mountain High School's volleyball team is in the playoffs tonight, and they're in second round. So they should be playing right now, so wish them luck if you can.
Backing off.
Do any other commissioners have anything to report tonight? Okay, I'll turn the floor over to Mr. King.
I would just like to say one thing. I want to give the public works people a big applause, you know, because what they were doing the other day with the shredder, I kind of came in here half-cocked to remember that, but anyway, sorry about that. But with the paper shredding, they were actually out there helping people and making it move very smoothly and carrying their stuff up for them, and everything went very well. And I mean, I think that's really a very courteous thing to do, and they didn't have to do it. They were letting people go ahead of them. So I want to make sure everybody recognizes them tonight for the good work they did.
Moving on now to Kevin, Mr. King and the county manager report.
Thank y'all. So tonight, I was going to talk a little bit about the Center for Domestic Peace, currently scheduled for the end of December. We're still are working through a lot of different issues with that, but our hopes are by the first of the year to be in that building. With that said, we are seeking an approach agreement with NC DOT, which that has been filed, and we're working through that process. There'll be some coordinated efforts, and we'll probably do a rebid and not go with GM that's currently doing the building, do that on a separate contract. So you'll be seeing that in the next couple of months when we get that going. The middle school property, this week, will have the two additional properties that we're going to be acquiring, a closing. I think it'll be later on this week, so that will be done. All of the topographical information has been completed, and now they're selecting the sole borrowing site. So that'll be happening probably in the next quarter, first to next quarter. In that, I just want to kind of make sure everybody's aware, we're approaching all of these projects in multi-phases. So the first one is going to be a kind of bundled together, it'll be a fairview elementary, that building, the track, the detention facility will be in, going to the LDC in February, is what our tack is right now for those four. And then the second phase will, of course, be the other, there'll be eight, six other ones, but there'll be two more additional financings. Just wanted to let you know that the bidding for most of those projects will be happening in December and January, and then hopefully be in line for the February LDC meeting. The Department of Aging, that's again been one of those projects that's been talked about for a couple of years, and so I can tell you that we are very close. In fact, November the fourth, I have a little bit of a celebration as the project is complete. And since it's more of a maintenance and renovation, not necessarily a grand opening, it's kind of a re-grand opening for the constituents that go there, but you're encouraged to be there on November fourth, so I have some refreshments. And that's all I have for tonight.
Moving on now to our informal comments. Michael Padgett.
Thank you. Just wanted to, after two weeks ago, your comments about the lack of confidence in you guys, wanted you to know that you have hundred percent confidence from me, I can only speak for myself, and just want you to keep the faith, keep doing what you're doing as best as you can, and know that there are a lot of us that support what you're doing. One thing that would be constructive, as you and I talked about, is that report from your consultants, as soon as that thing comes out, because there's so many facts and figures that people keep quoting without any support, any background, or source information as to where those figures are coming from. So the sooner that can come out, the better, and realize you can't do anything until the end of the period for that study. So that's all I have.
Next, we have Susan Bogartis.
Good evening. I'm really interested in there being technical support at the new library, as we set it up, because I'm one of those technically challenged individuals, and often when I'm working on something, there's always been someone there to help me, like, okay, yeah, you didn't get out of this window, you should have gone to that window, and I'm like, okay, I didn't really know to do that. Second thing is, personally, I'm just here talking about the grant. I'm interested in senior housing, especially because there's almost a two-year waiting period for the senior housing that's up along the Department of Aging, and I would hope that this new development would cut down that time, because the people that are waiting are usually very much in need, and they're, you know, they're more likely to fall, things like that, because they don't have solid surface gut steps and stuff like that. And that's really common in our area. So I think that I'm really interested in the senior housing, and also probably cutting down the time that we have to wait to get people in there, because most people don't put in there until they're fallen there, getting in there to shower, and you're like, okay, we're going to wait till we break our hip, and then, doesn't make much sense.
Thank you, Ms. Bogartis. Beth Baxley.
Thank you, as always, for this opportunity to speak. I would like to revisit the presentation made by Chris Weatherford, Jackson County DSS Director, on September second to this body. In it, he focused on the impact for the citizens of Jackson County resulting from the so-called Big Beautiful Bill, H G One, recently passed by Congress. The message was chilling. For our families, friends, and neighbors, we are looking at the loss of Medicaid health coverage for nearly three thousand fellow citizens in our county, devastating. Our crisis intervention program for low-income energy assistance will no longer be funded by the federal government. How will our county plan to make up for this difference in providing essential heating and cooling needs? There are four thousand two hundred Jackson County neighbors and friends who have been receiving food and nutrition services through the federal government. We will now have to pay two million a year to maintain the current balance for the services once covered full by the federal government. In addition, we will be paying seventy-five percent of caseworker costs for operating the Medicaid and the food and nutrition programs out of our county coffers. So we are looking at an enormous loss of services in millions in years to come, right here, for our families in terms of healthcare coverage, heating, cooling, food and nutrition. Grants won't cover it all, and heaven forbid we cut those critical services. At the same time, you are contemplating spending more than half a million dollars per year to pull our wonderful libraries out of the F R L agreement, a consortium that has worked beautifully for over eighty years. I implore you to focus on genuine human living needs and channel that money into crucial programs and services that will be lost. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baxley. Next, we have Bill Horton.
Evening. I'm really here on behalf of Bert Cornegay, who lives in Kanee Fort. Bert prepared a statement for y'all. He wasn't able to make the reading, so I'm here to read his statement for him, if that's okay. Hold on, I got to get my glasses on here so I can see what I'm doing. The read is as follows. "Jackson County Commissioners, I write to say that I heartily endorse the District Four Headwaters Conservation Plan that is to be presented to you on October twenty-first, and I endorse it as a long-term resident of Jackson County. I've lived in District Four, Kanee Fort, for over forty years. I've owned and operated a business out of Kanee Fort for thirty years, slick rock expeditions, now retired. My wife has worked in the county for thirty years at Western Carolina University, and we've raised a son here. We also own property on Kanee Fork up Moses Creek. We have our own residence here. In short, Jackson County is home. Jackson County is also home to some of the most rugged and beautiful mountains in our state. I look out my window now, and I see the great Boston Mountains around me. They give rise to Moses Creek and Kanee Fort, and along with other streams, they make up the headwaters of the Tuckasiegee River, which defines the boundaries of our whole county and of all its districts. Conservation Plan you're asked to consider gives guidelines for protection of the Tuckasiegee Headwaters, while at the same time it provides for development, it both sustains county growth and conserves the land and water that make our home special. Please give this headwaters plan the careful consideration that it deserves. Sincerely, Bert Cornegay."
Thank you. Moving on now to our consent agenda, and Ms. Fox.
Good afternoon. Going with the highlights for the month of September, the general fund revenues collected to date, thirty-two million, eight hundred thirty-seven thousand, hundred sixty-four dollars. That's thirty-one point oh four percent of budget. The expenditures are twenty-five million, eight seventy-nine fifteen, which are twenty-five point forty-six percent of budget. At this point, the revenues are six million, nine hundred sixty-six thousand, two forty-nine more than the expenditures. We do have accounts receivables booked for seven million, three ninety-nine, eight fifty-two, which are for the prior year. The ambulance taxes to date, twenty-one million, three ninety-eight, five seventy-six, that's thirty-seven point seven seven percent of budget, and the prior year taxes, ninety-five thousand, four ninety-three, that's nineteen point ten percent of budget. The motor vehicle taxes collect, six hundred and three thousand, three thirty-seven, it's twenty-eight point twelve percent of budget. The sales and use tax distribution we received in September is two million, two hundred fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars. That was for June sales. The amount's sixty-five thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars, more than we received in September of twenty-four. The Article forty-six distribution was two hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven ninety-one, and the average increase for the fiscal year, two point seven three percent. The landfill disposal fees, eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine ninety, that's twenty-six point eighty-eight percent of budget, and the prior year disposal fees, twenty thousand, six twenty-five, which is twenty-seven point five percent of budget. The growth revenues we're following for code enforcement, planning, environmental health, and rest of the deeds were over budget at this point for the code enforcement, environmental health, and rest of the deeds. So that shows that the economy is still moving forward. The general fund contingency appropriation, the amount appropriated was one million, eight hundred eighty-two thousand, twenty-two dollars, and the balance, one million, two hundred fifty-eight thousand, eight ninety-seven. Be glad to answer any questions on the report.
Questions from the board? If not, we'll move on to our budget ordinance amendments.
Got three amendments this afternoon. The first one is general fund. It's an increase of one hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars and seven cents. It's from some grants, Great Smokies Health Foundation, the Healthy Carolinians Opium Settlement Grant. There's a couple of decreases in social services. And we did have an increase for, we got thirty thousand from Towne of Silver for a skateboard, has insurance settlements, and a fund balance appropriation for carryovers from the previous year. The second one is the transfer to Whittier Quala Park out of CPR Fund from fund balance, seven hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven sixty-two, and this amount is the original included in the project ordinance. And the final one is for the Economic Development Fund. It's an increase of one million, nine hundred and seventy-nine hundred, one million, ninety-two thousand dollars. We had a grant from the North Carolina Rail Company grant, then a Project Rise grant from TDA, and Tobacco Trust grant, both of those were for five hundred thousand each. Any questions? Thank you.
Next up, we have Ms. Henson and our tax collector and refund reports for September.
Good evening. So for the month of September, the current taxes collected for the county were six million, five thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars. The delinquent taxes collected were forty-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars. The total collections for the month were six million, four hundred and three thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars and ninety-four cents. There were refunds of four thousand, ninety-four dollars and eighty-seven cents, and releases of three hundred and forty dollars and seventy-eight cents. Any questions?
Questions from the board?
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
And a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed? Moving on now to our new business, and first up tonight, we have our Headwater District Conservation Plan, and Owen Carson. Evening, Owen.
All right, I can deal with these things, I'm sorry. Evening, y'all. I appreciate you inviting me back for this final presentation of the conservation plan. No, there's a, the first line was this subfolder, it's Headwater CP is the folder. And then the, yep, there you go. Thank you. Okay, did I just advance with the mouse here? Okay, great. All right, so, here we are. So, I'm back, and I'm here, and I'm leading with the same slide that I led last time, because it's important that everyone in this room understands what the purpose of this whole effort was. The purpose was to develop a conservation plan that assesses the priorities of the community and generates recommendations to ensure that their rural, scenic, and natural character are conserve in face of increasing development pressure. Whole purpose of this plan. In a nutshell, that idea can be boiled down into the phrase, plan, diligent for the future, protect what is most important to you as a community, and prosper because of it. Now, you've been given executive summary upfront, so I'm going to go through it, give some highlights for the crowd here. But in a nutshell, this plan is community-driven, led by a core steering committee group of members who live and work in Jackson County and the district. Together, we, with that steering committee, and the rest of our team, engaged nearly forty key stakeholders within the community, representing a wide range of interest groups. And then after we engaged those stakeholders, we went to the public, we held public meetings, and then we solicited the opinion of the public through a public survey. And what we found through that was that Jackson County and District Four in particular are exceptional. Wonderful, clean water, where there's beautiful rugged mountains, as Mr. Cornegay mentioned in his comment, intact forested lands, and over thirty-five thousand acres of farmland here. That's important to the way of life. We also found increasing development pressure, rapid growth driven by second home development, strain on resources, potentially losing as much as two thousand acres of farmland by 2040, and developmental slopes which presents risks to safety, property, water quality, and life. We also did find that there is broad support within the community and aligning values there. We have a consensus that the public here really appreciates and supports conservation of natural resources. We also distilled some conservation priorities in our engagements. Top priority, safeguarding water resources, directing growth away from sensitive lands, preserving farmland and working forests to preserve the way of life here, connecting landscapes and communities, expanding trail systems, drainways, and habitat corridors, and promoting stewardship and outdoor economy. From those inputs came outputs, the first of which was a series of best practices that were tailored for the three groups that we felt are the activators of this plan in the future, county leaders and planners, developers and builders, and private landowners. Each of those groups played a strong role in the future of Jackson County. But the culmination of our work led to recommendations, and presented here on the screen, and as you've seen before, higher-level recommendations, but we delve deep into the details of the document. I highlight though, promoting successful development, protecting and enhancing farmland, establishing a headwaters stewardship council, strengthening and enforcing land use ordinances, investing in connectivity and outdoor recreation, and working with community partners to implement priority conservation projects. And I don't normally read slides, but I think this last one is very important, because it kind of succinctly summarizes what we've done. The Headwater System Conservation Plan provides your county with an authoritative, community-driven roadmap to protect its most valuable resources. It recognizes that conservation is not an obstacle to growth, but a prerequisite for long-term prosperity, safety, and quality of life. By acting on the key recommendation outlined within the plan, the county leaders and planners, developers and builders, and private landowners can all, together, take meaningful steps to protect the county's headwaters and farmland, reduce safety risks and costs of unmanaged growth, strengthen the outdoor recreation economy, and preserve the cultural and ecological heritage of Southern Jackson County for future generations. And implementing even select recommendations in this plan will have a significant positive impact and position you as a leader in balancing conservation and development in Western North Carolina. So again, in a nutshell, the idea, plan for the future, protect what is most important to you, and we can all prosper because of it. Are there any questions?
Does anyone have any questions for Owen? How do you plan on protecting the farmland?
Well, that's a great question, and I appreciate you asking it, because we have done a lot of work. Our steering committee had a strong focus on farmland protection, and as I stated last time, we feel, together as a group, and me personally, feel that agriculture and conservation need to be brought together increasingly in the future, because they are under the same umbrella of conservation. So, protecting farmland, there are several ways that we recommend doing it, one of which I spoke about last time, which has already begun, a cost of community services study, which will provide you with the value that agricultural land provides and the return on investment of your dollar in agriculture. And those studies underline the significance and importance of agriculture in your community. They also become catalysts for accessing other grant materials and other programs that help you protect farmland. We also recommend bolstering the soil and water staff, you know, looking to hold agricultural conservation easements if possible. There are ways to do that, you can't make that happen on staff, which some counties can't, it's understandable. You have old trust partners, at least three of whom are willing to work with you on protecting agricultural land. And then we also give you tools to advocate- And then we also give you tools to advocate for programs that will help legitimize and support and advocate for your farmers. And so, specific things like Prostate Use Value Program. Right now, there's acreage limitations that prevent farmers who make a certain amount of money from accessing tax benefits because they simply don't have the right-sized land, it's not big enough. And so, advocating for change at state level on those statewide programs is something that you can do, and we provide guidance and direction in the back.
Some of that's ongoing now as we're working through this too.
It is.
Already people that are working with soil and water to try and...
Absolutely.
Get those present land use areas where a smaller-sized farmer can, you know, get some deductions.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, we have, as y'all know, like farming here is something way different than farming out east is. And when we try to compete in the mountains for grant programs that Eastern counties can also compete for, it's difficult because we have small, milch farmland, we have Fraser fir trees, we have, you know, flat land is scarce. And so, we've figured out a way to eke out a living up here with agriculture in... But it doesn't always bear with the programs that are at a statewide level to support it. So, looking to expand programs here, working with partners, and also advocating at the state level for better access to those programs for your people. You're welcome. Absolutely.
Any additional questions for Owen? If not, I'll seek a motion for approval. Take a motion for approval of the Headwater District Conservation Plan?
Aye.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? Moving on now to the offer to purchase and contract for the 1.1 acres at Kitty Hawk Road, Resolution 25-23. And Ms. Tucker?
Good evening. This is the property that you just accepted the bid about a month and a half ago. And that bidder has withdrawn his bid. So now we have a brand-new bid from a homeowner that is right beside this property, way up Dix Creek. And there's no access road to it, so this gentleman will be right beside this property, and he is bidding in a $1,000 bid. So if you would like to accept that, just let us know. It was quite a bit higher, it was $4,000. But due to the fact that there's not an access road to it and this guy's right beside it, I don't think we would be able to get that bid again.
And this will go back up for an upset bid for 90 days, 10?
10.
I see no problem with that. Is there a motion to approve this bid?
I mean, if I thought we could get more money, but just because there's not an access road, I don't know that we would be able to.
Besides the one person?
There's a letter that goes out after the bid to every single homeowner, and he's the only gentleman that...
Has responded?
Of all the surrounding ones.
So they've been aware for a while now?
Correct. Correct, the one with the house, the only one with the house. 1.11.
I have no problem with it, it puts it back on the register, on the tax table. Nah, it's foreclosure. Is there a motion for approval? Gets him... A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Tell him happy birthday.
I will. Thank you.
Next up, we have our Register of Deeds refund, and Mr. King.
We have two refunds for you to consider. The first one is for $20, it was for a deed but... 2403, page 1634, showing $445 of revenue stamps. The affidavit states only $425 should have been paid, that's a projection of $20. And the second one is, but 2406, page 1542, stating only $780 should have been paid. And it's like, $3,900 was paid, so we refund of $3,120.
Any questions for Mr. King? If not, I'll take a motion for approval of those refunds. And a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Moving on now to our fire protection and automatic aid contract for Casser's Glenville Volunteer Fire Department.
So, ever so often, the commissioners have to approve giving a district to a fire department, a volunteer fire department. And basically, the Casser's Glenville Fire Department is requesting an extension of their contract. And I believe this is a five-year contract, so if we renew in five more years after this. This actually sunsetted in June, but it is still active based on the fact we had a 90-day, you know, written policy on that, so... But we're requesting another five-year extension for that service.
Questions for Mr. King? If not, I'll take a motion for approval of this. And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, we've got Resolution 25-23, notes to all candidates for sheriff and register of deeds.
So this resolution is in response to, I think y'all was questioning about years of service for elected officials, specifically with register of deeds and the sheriff office. This resolution act will be that, it establishes the pace of plan, plus it also kind of gives them credible service years based on their previous experiences, where the other way it went and was not the county policy which limits it to 10 years. This would actually limit it on up. So, I think that was kind of where y'all were going with it when we asked. And so we actually do this prior to the election filing period, and so this is for your consideration.
But this would give like, the years of service whether you were in Jackson County or not?
That's the way it's written, so it says, "And further, that the designated board commissioners may adjust the starting salary of the candidate elected, considered years of service and performance and related experience of the person elected." So it doesn't specify where it was donated, it specifies that they have years of service within that career category.
Because it was like, a captain with the sheriff that got his years of experience, and it wasn't in Jackson County. But the sheriff didn't get all of his.
Yeah. It doesn't specify that in the resolution, so y'all can...
All right.
Is there any questions, any additional questions for Mr. King? Take a motion for approval?
So moved.
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yep.
Chairman Lytton?
Yes. Okay. Moving on now to our Resolution 25-25 and Block Grants Neighborhood Revitalization Program. And Mr. Poston and Ms. Henry.
So this is the... The approval process that the commissioners need to... The resolution commissioners need to adopt, and it needs to be included with the application and supporting the application and the staff's ability to file that. Along with that, we would ask, as you're considering adopting this resolution, that you would also consider giving the chairman the authority to sign the grant documents. Those include the federal requirements of certification, the state has, they have listed state requirements certifications. Yeah, they have a civil rights complaints lawsuit section, department section. So all those are necessary signatures in order for us to submit a complete application. So we would request not only that you consider adopting this resolution in support of the county applying for $5 million in CDBG and R funds, but also to allow the chairman to sign the appropriate, the documents that are required of the grant. Be happy to answer any additional questions. Mr. Lytton?
No, 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 chairman of the board, sorry. Did you have anything else you wanted to add about the project? Chairman?
I don't have anything else to add about this project, because we just kind of went through it. Only thing that I will also mention on here, you notice we put the match of the $750,000. That is what you had allocated in this current fiscal year budget. It's not a requirement for this grant, but it helps us leverage and score better by showing that commitment by this local board. So we felt it was really important to go ahead and include that in this resolution so that they know that we're committed to supporting this project. And we really felt like, you know, this is, while we don't know, there's a few things that we're still trying to figure out with the way we apply for these funds. We're waiting on a call from the state office at Commerce to really help us guide those final few steps. So that's why we're asking for it now. And we have to submit this application, it has to be received in Raleigh by the 29th next week. So, timing is everything at this point.
Is there a motion to approve this resolution along with the ability for myself to sign any required documents? Second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Hooper?
Yes.
Chairman Lytton?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Is there any questions from the press this evening? We do have a need to go into closed session this evening for legal and real property. With no further business in our regular session, I'll take a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? We are in closed session.